Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here this morning, Commissioners. It's eight o'clock and we'll start our briefing session on the agenda. Commissioner Kumari will be having our invocation. Commissioner Mayo, pledge of allegiance. Approval of amendments. Discussion and adjustment of agenda. Let's go over that for a second and see if we have any agenda add-ons this morning. Please. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. We do have a couple items. You should have in front of you a budget amendment one zero two from the Sheriff's Office. We would like to add that under budget amendments number two. If we could, we'll give explanation about that in the meeting. And we also have three additional contracts that came in this morning. It was Elroy, Northern Wayne, and I can't remember which one.
Anya.
Anya. So we'd like to add those with the other contracts for fire departments, if we could.
Who will be presenting that?
Brian.
Brian Taylor.
Brian Taylor. Thank you. And a closed session. We do need a real short closed session early this morning, just two or three minutes. And then we're asking for one based on attendance of an additional party at around 11:00 a.m. this morning. So there really probably, well, will be two of us.
All right. Any other additions or adjustments? Any Commissioners have anything they'd like to walk on this morning? Under new business, Gateway presentation, who will be doing that this morning?
Lynn Lambert.
Lynn.
Obviously, the nine o'clock, you've got the rope application hearing. And she'll be giving data about that also. So she'll be here for the entirety of the meeting.
And this is a public hearing. There will be no action required on that public hearing. Is that correct?
Yeah. We'll just take a public comment and then we'll bring you for consideration at the next meeting, the application.
Okay.
We've got time. I think it's later in October, so you have time to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions on that from the Commissioners? Number three, the big suite?
Yes. We have Barbara Byers. We'll be giving that presentation this morning from Cooperative.
The robotics program, number four. Number four.
We have Kevin Johnson, and then he'll have Wallace Simmons with him. And I assume he'll have other guests. We also have, we're going to do the video. It's about seven or eight minutes, about presentation. The other day, we wanted everyone to be able to see that. So that'll be a ten or twelve-minute presentation all we go.
Okay.
We'll let Kevin introduce any folks that he has with him.
Okay. We have the volunteer fire department, number six. Number seven, September seventeenth through twenty-third?
I'll say number five.
Number five. Time Warner update?
Time Warner. That's Eric Collins. We'd asked him to attend because there are some changes, some of the channels, particularly affecting Channel Ten, our channel, going from analog to digital. So we've asked him to be here to give you a full update on that and what the impacts are going to be. We're having to run some special announcements on Channel Ten, letting people know what's changing, because there are changes to people out there, and there's some movement of channels based on digital change happening all across the country. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell?
Since we're talking about Time Warner, I'm going to ask Mr. Smith a question. Didn't that come up by Seven Springs? Do you remember what was the deal on that when we was talking about cable going to cross the bridge?
I've talked to them years ago. Marsha mentioned to me that was one of the items after our review yesterday, some of the items that were discussed Thursday evening, I believe is when you met. That's something you might want to ask Eric and ask him to research. We have looked at that Indian Springs, Seven Springs area before. I made a request some years ago, it's probably been five or six years ago, to two specific roads. I cannot recall the exact names, but they did surveys but did not have the sufficient number of houses per mile to determine, you know, to be able to put in the, you know, the fiber that was needed or the lines, cable that was needed. But I would ask him today and look for review. I've not had a request from anyone, Marsha, in a year or so. We've not had any requests in the county. Usually, we get them every two or three months and I've had requests, but we can, I would certainly ask him about that today.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Volunteer fire departments, we've moved through that. Brian Taylor will do that. Number seven, Constitution Week proclamation. Do you have someone to read that? Any volunteers? Do you have anyone here to present that?
No, we're not sure. One had a doctor's appointment.
Okay.
So you may want to have one of your volunteers. Someone shows up, we'll, yeah, let's have a stand.
Who would like to do that, Commissioners?
I'll do that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayo?
Yeah.
Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month proclamation. Do you have someone here for that?
Yes. We have Gina Lane. Gina Lane, East Point, will be here. She's coming from Rocky Mountain. She'll be here.
Resolution of expressing a gratitude appreciation to the United States Armed Forces. That was that RPO that we brought up last meeting.
Rob will.
Rob's going to be here to do that? We have the request for, to approve purchase price property for proposed Spring Creek Middle School. Do we have someone from the school here on that?
It's supposed to have Nan Barlow. Is Dr. Taylor going to come? Okay.
Good.
He told me Nan, but, okay.
Good.
And then she said, Dr. Taylor. I don't know. Maybe they'll both show up.
Good.
They'll have a team, maybe.
Mr. Parker, this is a formality, correct? Is there a statute?
For the purchase of the property?
Yes, sir.
The Board of Commissioners has to approve the purchase price of the property.
Okay.
Board of Education cannot go out and buy property without your approval.
Okay. What I'd like you to do before the presentation is make that announcement, please, through that statute and read that to us, and then I'll recognize them to come up. Just go ahead and set that formality.
And then you also, on the application, you have the lottery application. So there really are, what, two items?
Two items.
Two items. The lottery and the actual price approval.
Sure. Just go ahead and have you to read that, and then I'll sort of a protocol to bring them up. We'll just address the Commission on that. Establish a public hearing on methane power wing LLC to extend lease?
Mm-hmm. Yes, Tim Rogers will be here. And basically, we're just asking October first, nine fifteen. They are refinancing that project or some of their methane projects in North Carolina. So, and it was a twenty-year project. So this asks them to extend that back up to the twenty years, because it's a twenty-year financing. And we'll have all the details, and Tim will be here to go over that.
Old Mill Creek, Section Two and Section Five subdivision plat revision for Willowbrook. Those two.
Number twelve also.
Yeah, Chip. He's right here. Yeah, Chip will be handling those. And you skipped over twelve.
Too many yellows. Okay. Chip's got those two. Resolution requesting wind correctional center from the state of North Carolina.
I'll read it.
Mr. Bell?
There was also, we discussed with Mr. Bell, Mr. Mayo this morning, the possibility of, I think there was also an additional recommendation from the committee on the RFQ, to bring the RFQ to the committee. So you just may want to mention that. We'll be working on that as a staff, bring it to the committee, then to the Commissioners in October.
Okay.
Would you like to do that under Commissioners Committee Reports, Mr. Bell, or would you just rather wait until it gets there? It's up to you.
It doesn't matter. I mean, whatever.
You got anything that you can? Did you want to get to Mr. Bell during his committee reports? Please.
Okay. Yeah, we can do it. And if you want to do it there during reports, either way, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll do it.
We can give you some information. Okay?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
Wait a second. So you're just going to get that information to Mr. Bell for his committee reports? That'd be okay?
That'll be fine.
And then we'll approach that resolution. And Mr. Bell will read that.
Did you want to talk about the additional person?
Mr. Bell, the addition, the addition to the.
The committee.
Judiciary Board.
Oh, that's right. We're going to do that. We do that at departments. You just go ahead and do that.
You only do that?
Yeah, I make the motion. Or you can make the motion, because you got.
No, you do that with the Chairman, because it's not coming through the Department Committee.
Okay. We'll do it then.
So if you will make that motion, and then the Commissioner can.
So could you do that under number twelve? Just say, member appointment?
Okay.
Scott Peel?
Mm-hmm. Or you can do that under his.
Report. Either way.
Under his report, Commissioners' report, add that or include that in his report that he wanted to make a recommendation.
Okay.
Okay. We can do that and just give you a couple items for, okay?
Right.
All right. We'll go do that in just a moment.
Okay. And then the other two items for Chip?
Yes.
Is there any particular, something you want to go over and explain beforehand? Chip?
Yeah, well, we've got, one of these subdivision plats is a revision.
Come, I'll come up.
One of these subdivision plats is a revision. I'll try to figure it out. It's, they're asking for two things, subdivision plat approval and a variance to our subdivision ordinance. In our ordinance, they have Section seventy-one oh one as a suitability of land. We don't normally allow lots to be created with, where the whole lot is inside of the flood zone. So what they're doing here is they have subdivided, re-subdivided four lots at the rear of Willowbrook Drive and separated out the flood zone, separate from the main lot, so that the houses could be built and sold without the necessity for flood insurance, because the flood zone comes up on those lots. So in essence, you're creating four parcels back there that are in the flood zone, which, so they're asking for approval of the subdivision and approval of a variance on the subdivision. Those two things. Planning Board recommends approval. And that's all on that. The other one's straightforward.
Okay.
That's a very unique way of handling that.
Yeah.
And I think that's a good idea.
Well, it'll make the sale of the lots easier.
Because none of the lots where the homes are going to be built will actually be in the flood plain.
Correct. And they're leaving access to the rear. And also, there's a note on the plat that those rear lots are to be conveyed with each of the front lots. So they're not to be built upon, and that's noted on the plat.
And use it for yard or whatever.
Agreed.
No construction on.
That's right. When you go from a, when you do an variance to policy, Mr. Parker, is, does it require any special hearings or public hearings or anything of that nature?
If not, you'd be able to act on it today if you wanted to.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments on that? Public comments in a closed session at eleven o'clock?
We'd like to have one earlier this morning, too, just a real brief.
But one at eleven o'clock. Board of Commissioners' comments. Commissioners' information. Managers' report?
Not today.
You don't have a manager's report today?
I think you have enough.
Have a motion we go into closed session? And for what purpose?
To consult with the attorney, preserve the attorney's client's privilege.
Okay. Motion's on the floor. Going to closed session with Mr. Bell. Any objection? All opposed? All in favor? Raise your hand. Any objections? Having our Wayne County Board meeting this morning streamed live for the first time, audio and video on the Internet this morning. The mics are hot this morning, so we just ask you to, any comments, motions or anything, make sure you close to the mic. But we really appreciate that this morning and our IT department and our Public Information Office making sure that is taking place this morning. Thank you so much for the staff, Mr. Smith, and making that happen. We'd like to start our mornings with our invocation. Commissioner Kumari, please.
Almighty God, we're coming for you today to give things for another day on a perfect earth, having an opportunity to do good work for mankind and the citizens of Wayne County, and to pray for your blessings, and to pray for your blessings. Yes, O Lord, to pray for our President, who struggles with a troubled world and even a troubled nation, our governor, that he might serve all citizens equally, our safety officers, who protect us and protect our physical beings, our county manager, that he may provide strong direction, and our Board of Commissioners, dear heaven and father, they may do good oversight. Finally, dear God, we ask for forgiveness in this violent and troubled world of past and present. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Commissioner Mayo with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Each meeting, we start with a general statute that mandates that the Chairman inquire as to whether any member knows of any known conflict of interest or even an appearance of conflict with respect to matters before the Commission this day. If any member knows of a conflict of interest or appearance of a conflict, please state so at this time. Thank you. Approval of the minutes. Is there a motion that we approve these?
So, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Any discussion? All those in favor approving the minutes, raise your hand. All those opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Discussion and adjustments of the agenda. We did have our briefing this morning at eight o'clock. Mr. Smith, any additions or on that, adjustments?
Yes, sir. Really no additional items, other than we did add a Sheriff's Office budget amendment under budget amendments number two and new business. And we did add three additional contracts under fire department contracts. Other than that, I believe, that's everything this morning. And you have copies of those.
Thank you. The public hearing this morning on rural operating assistance program application at nine o'clock. Public hearing at this time, we will go into our public hearing session. Mr. Parker and Mr. Smith, like to enlighten us on the purpose.
Yes. It is the rope application. And I asked Director Lynn Lambert if she'd come up, maybe give just a real brief update on what this application is. We do this every year. But if she could come forward to the podium and give an update, and then you can go into close, excuse me, into public comment. And then we'll, the plan today is to hear any comments. If there are any, or if there are none, we would bring it back to you at the next meeting for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Lynn Lambert, and I'm the Transportation Director for Gateway. I am here to request approval of the Rural Operating Assistance Program application for Wayne County. As part of this public hearing, I have volunteer, voluntary Title VI public involvement forms available for anyone who would like to provide voluntary demographic statistical information. The NC DOT collects information on race, color, national origin, and gender of the attendees to this public meeting to ensure the inclusion of all segments of the population affected by the proposed project. You should have all received a copy of the rope application, and in that application, I provided a cover letter that provides an outline for that application. Just to summarize quickly, this program is a state-funded public transportation grant program administered by the NC DOT and includes the following three programs. The Elderly and Disabled Transportation Assistance Program, the Employment Transportation Assistance Program, and the Rural General Public Program. Wayne County's funding is $229,928, which is 10% higher than last year's approved amount. It should be noted, as stated in correspondence from NC DOT, that funds change unpredictably from year to year and may not be available some years. Recipients of these funds have traditionally been DSS Employment, Services on Aging, Wayne Opportunity Center, and Gateway. It is the responsibility of the county to suballocate and distribute funds to local agency. Gateway completes the application for the county and assists in the distribution of funds to eligible recipients. The only local match required for this grant is for the Rural General Public Program, which is 10%, and that is fully covered by the system fairs. We are asking for you to approve the application and the distribution of funds between the agencies, which is the same as the prior fiscal year. The application is due to NC DOT by October eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, and dispersment will be made on October thirty-first for 100% of the approved amount. Are there any questions at this time?
Any questions for Ms. Lambert? Little more? Thank you, Ms. Lambert.
Okay, thank you.
Be time now for public hearings. Anyone here wishes to speak in reference to this application process? Being none, then the public hearing is closed. The discussion on this matter, is there any discussion from the Commissioners? Mr. Bell?
Is there anything that we have to do for us? Any work that we have to do on this application?
No, everything's complete. The only thing we'll need to do is bring it back to the next meeting. As Ms. Lambert said, it is due on the eighteenth, so we can bring it back to the October.
First.
Meeting. And I ask for consideration by the Board, and if you adopt or approve the application at the time, it will move forward. And as Ms. Lambert said, we'll move through those next processes.
That'd be enough time for her to get it in on time?
Yes.
Any others? Thank you, Mr. Bell. From that, we'll go into our reports from our Commissioners. We'll begin with Mr. Kumari.
Thank you, sir. Out of the committees that I am assigned to, the one that I did meet with was the library committee last Friday. Ms. Donna Phillips and I sort of jointly gave an update on the Steel Library. She specifically talked about some things that had occurred in the meeting that was held between staff, facility's chairman, and the contractors dealing with steel. And I shared with them also that there were what I would consider minor problems having to do with the physical facility itself that are being corrected within the broader contract. So just to say to the public, the Steel Memorial Library is on good track, and we're progressing steadily down the road, and we're real proud of the process. And thanks to this board and everybody, the county manager and everybody concerned, Ms. Phillips and her staff, we can be happy that it's moving down the road. And I'm going to be brief with these, but I want to just mention them because I know the other Commissioners were all there at these particular meetings. We had meetings with the municipalities. And while I won't take the time to name them individually, they all had some situations that I think probably are inherent to the kind of economic conditions we're in, the cost of things getting higher and resources, money coming in getting slimmer. And so my comments to, in a couple of situations was, is there any way that you might combine with someone else, and not to be specific, but just to combine with someone else, to ease the burden of the lesser dollars that we have? We just got to work, oh, please, we got to work smarter, not harder. Well, we may have to join together as county government and municipalities to get the services out to the citizens that maybe in the past, we could do individually. So to citizens, I say to you, where you have an opportunity to begin discussions, how different municipalities may cooperate together, and then how the county government may serve you within the dollars that we have. So I'll just leave that at that. Also, I had the opportunity to listen to an economic forecaster out at, that came through the Economic Development Commission. He had some interesting things to say, and I know one of my partners has a little bit more than he's going to say about it, so I won't venture over into that. But I just want to close by saying, the meetings that we had with the municipalities, I found very interesting, and to meet them personally was probably the thing that was uppermost, because you just don't get a chance to meet folk from all the different municipalities. They don't have a reason to come up here, so we don't see them. Good job on arranging that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kumari. Mr. Page?
A couple of meetings I attended. Met with the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board Thursday the fifth. What happens there, that those are the workforce dollars that go into the communities in what we call, used to be called Regent P., now says Carolina Region. Saw a presentation on a new match job, excuse me, job, matching job listing program operated by all the workforce development partners in the Department of Commerce called NC Works, replaced another system that was not working as well. It's just been launched, and they're working out some of the bugs, so you can imagine there are issues like any new software program that's going on out there. Locally, money was given to Wayne Community College. They were awarded an additional $50,000 to its adult budget, giving them a total of $195,000 for the current fiscal year, to serve individuals and for short-term training, on job training and work experience. And they were given this money because they're operating such a good program already, so that's the way they awarded those dollars out there. Met with the Works Program Act Wayne Community last Thursday. We had several things that we were updated on soft skills training, introduction to manufacturing, and now they're also offering supervisory training, which had not been available before. So those of you who are in private business, but want to consider that. And we discussed a grant that they received for certified production tech training of $98,000. And Diane Ivey and Mike Handy have met with several companies at the WCDAs to discuss the certificate and the importance, which is another credential to add on to the career readiness certificate, which is, you know, they're always trying to move forward this time. And also, we did meet and got to see Dr. Michael Walden, is that his name? I hope to be correct about that. The Tennessee State. I always enjoy hearing him talk, because the man really knows what he's talking about in terms of our economy. It's a great update. And one thing that was brought out that he talked about that people miss and don't quite understand is the unemployment rates. And I always talk about it a little bit at our meetings, and normally what is happening, we're hanging around 9%. If you see a small percentage jump one way or the other, it really doesn't mean much. You have to look at trends. And the fact that we're standing around 9% means we're just kind of treading more here locally. But the better thing to really look at is the number of jobs that are created, which is a better barometer to really be looking at. And we're probably losing some and probably gaining some, but it's probably about the same. Anyway, those were the committee meetings I had, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Mr. DeCott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a lot to report on this morning, as most of you all know. I've kind of been out of the loop for a few weeks. But I'm back and ready to go back to work. I do want to just touch lightly on the communication system. We are making progress, and I feel like that we can probably have a little more or better information probably at one of the October meetings. Also, this past Saturday, the Farmers Association had their competition day at the training ground at the airport. This is a program that they had had for many, many years, and I don't know, probably ten, twelve years now. They had not had this competition day, but they started it back this year. They had a real good turnout, and I'd like to thank and congratulate all the departments that participated. And I would especially like to thank the Hunter Ford Department for their participation, because they would overall. because they were overall champions. They got more points than the others did, and that's a first for that department. But like I said, I want to thank all the departments that participated, and I hope that next year it'll be bigger and better. And also, Farming Association Monthly Meeting is tonight at Antioch Fire Department at 7:30. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Stacott. Mr. Mayo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Been a busy two weeks. I was making a list, and the list just kept getting longer, but some things have already been mentioned by the other commissioners, but on September the 4th, the Economic Development Forum that we all attended at the Goldsboro Country Club, Dr. Michael Walden is Commissioner Pate. One of the things that everybody is recognizing is that even though the unemployment rate is hovering around 9%, we're not sure where the unemployment rate is going to be in the future because, especially in manufacturing, the technology has grown by leaps and bounds in our manufacturing sector. So we're able to turn out more product with less people. But at the same time, you have to have support to run all these technological machines that are available. So we're not quite sure yet where the unemployment rate is going to settle. There's speculation, but nothing really set in stone. The other thing is on September the 5th, we met at the Langtree for the end-of-session Legislative Update Breakfast put on by the Chamber of Commerce. We had all our legislative delegates there, got a report, final report of the legislative session and what's going on, and that was very informative. The other thing, and I won't mention all of these, but the municipalities that we have met with so far, and I believe I'm correct, we've met with Fremont, Eureka, Seven Springs, and what's the other one?
Mount Olive.
Mount Olive, I'm sorry. And the overriding concerns are, of course, as Mr. Kumarti has already said, is revenue, water and sewer, and infrastructure. Those things are high on the priority list. Also, on September the 10th, the Wayne County Detention Center Advisory Board, which is our new board, met and we voted to present a resolution, which is on our agenda today, requesting the Wayne Correctional Center from the state to be conveyed to our county. Of course, Mr. Bale's going to have a lot to say about that because he's the chairman. Also, the Wayne County Development Alliance Board of Directors Meeting, we had this past week, and we had a lot of activity from industry and inquiries, looking at our county, seeing if there's a fit for business and industry to move here, and that's good news. The activity has picked up dramatically as far as the inquiries that we're getting. So even though you've seen in the paper where we're maybe losing some jobs, we're also replacing some jobs with growth from existing industry. So everything is not doom and gloom. We just have a lot of work to do. Also, I know my report's long, but the, I met this week with the Eastern Region down in Kinston. Actually, it was a nonprofit site. If you remember, the Eastern Region is moving into a nonprofit situation, and it's called the North Carolina Eastern Alliance. And it's, I think in October, we're going to have the CEO of Eastern Region, John Chafee, we're going to have him here to give an update to the commissioners and to our county on how this is transitioning and how it's fitting in with the state and Secretary Decker. Last but not least is that on September 13th and 14th, which was this past weekend, I was able to go to with the Wayne County Chamber of Commerce Military Affairs Committee called MAC. We met at Langley Air Force Base in Hampton, Virginia. And we were hosted by the general, which is the commander of the Air Combat Command, and I sort of kidded him a little bit once I got to know him because, get his name. His name is General Mike Hostage III. H.O.S.T.A.G.E. That's his name. And his wife Kathy, they were very, they were great hosts. But let me just back up for a second because a lot of people don't know what the MAC Committee does. I want to just explain to you what it does. The Wayne County Chamber of Commerce Military Affairs Committee are a group of civic leaders supporting Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. They are a 501(c)(4) corporation nonprofit status. Their mission is to promote public relations between Seymour Johnson Air Force Base and military members all over the world, and to show appreciation and say thanks for what the military does in support of their community and the United States of America. There was a lot of, there were a lot of colonels and generals at this meeting, and one of the things that I kept hearing, Colonel Levitt was there from Seymour Johnson. One of the things I kept hearing from everyone I talked to is that Wayne County is known across this nation for protecting its base. Commanders that have been stationed all over the United States and overseas, they came up to us and said, we've heard about Wayne County. We heard about what you're doing to protect the base. We know about the windmills and situation that you've had. And they thanked us for that. But the other thing is, is that they're all concerned. They're all concerned about the effect of the sequester on our military. General Hostage had made the statement that almost two-thirds, almost two-thirds of Langley Air Force Base, at some point in time, the pilots are not current in order to go into combat because of the sequestration and cut back on training hours, lack of fuel, and they're dealing with it. They've even had to put some enlisted pilots, enlisted people on furlough. And we're having to do that to a certain degree here at Seymour. So we need to continue to work with our legislature, our state legislature, and of course, the Pentagon and Congress to try to get the funding back so our military can protect us, which they are mandated to do. So it was a great meeting, and I appreciate the opportunity to go. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Ms. Dottery?
It's been an interesting and bumpy couple of weeks. I attended the Economic Forum and the Legislative Breakfast sponsored by the Chamber, and it was very informative. And I applaud the Chamber for sponsoring those. The Sam's Club celebrated their three grand opening, and that was enlightening to me to go to that, to meet some of the staff there. They have gone in and added a bakery, they've added a pharmacy, they've added a lot of different things to Sam's Club. And the most surprising thing of that was that Sam's has been open for 20 years, and it's just amazing to imagine that 20 years Sam's been here, things are flying by. We all enjoyed the joint meetings with Mount Olive, Fremont, Eureka, and Seven Springs. These towns are facing some serious problems, and I'm hoping that the county can help find some of those solutions. One of the overriding things that I was shocked to hear is the loss of residents in those particular towns. They are shrinking in their populations, and that's got to be turned if they're going to sustain. We all have read and see that Blue Cross and Wayne Memorial have some issues. Blue Cross has pulled away from the negotiating table and has in fact notified Wayne Memorial that as of December the 5th, they will be canceling that contract. That contract has been canceled. I want to state today that a lot of this is a result of renegotiating a contract between Blue Cross and Wayne Memorial. And it is a direct result of Obamacare and the effects of Obamacare going forward. And our insurance providers are in a very difficult situation. They're having to negotiate their position now to sustain themselves going forward. And at the same time, Wayne Memorial has to make sure that they can sustain themselves. Those negotiations have gone on for some time, over a year, and at this point, Wayne Memorial offered some additional concessions, and Blue Cross decided just to pull out of negotiations. Now, I say all that to say that we're hoping this is going to be resolved. I equate this to the negotiations between Tom Warner and CBS. I mean, you all hear that almost every few years, where they enter into negotiations and one side or the other plays hardball. And I think that's what's happening. We can all hope that over the next few months, that those matters would be resolved. I'll keep you informed. And finally, I feel like I need to address the events relating to our last work session on Literacy Connections. I am sorry if I appear to be insensitive or harsh in any way with my questioning of Director Pat Yates. Some would have me simply approve any request for funding and quit asking some hard questions. That's just not me, I'm sorry. It really would be easy not to press to get the facts. There is no disrespect intended in these questions. Many taxpayers take issue with the fact that government is taxing citizens and then deciding to distribute those tax dollars to nonprofit organizations. Literacy Connections is not a department of Wayne County Government. It has a laudable mission and provides a great service to our community, but it is not a county agency. It has its separate charter, its policies, and its own Board of Directors. Wayne County simply takes some of your tax dollars and donates it to Literacy Connections. In the, a little history here, in the past four years, that donation has grown from $5,700, $5,700, to over $122,000 that was allocated in this year's budget. So that's $5,700 all the way to $122,000. Mrs. Yates is asking that that donation of tax dollars be for an additional $27,000 for a grand total of $149,000. To put things into perspective, this year's new budget has reduced dispersments to nonprofits from $1.7 million to $850,000, almost half. Yet Literacy Connections was increased from $112,000 to $122,000. So I think we do need to keep things in perspective. There has to be some limits on the amount of tax dollars transferred to nonprofits. Has to be some limits. The taxpayers cannot be the primary source of funding of nonprofits, no matter how laudable their mission. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Dottery. Mr. Bale?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended a juvenile justice meeting last Friday, and everything there is pretty much the same with the exception that juvenile probation and parole is being consolidated with adult probation and parole, just for your information. I don't know how that's going to work, you know, when you take these little kids and I don't, they're not going to be supervised together, but they're going to be in the same department. And Commissioner David Geis is going to be the head of adult and juvenile for the state of North Carolina. Misdemeanors, and Mr. Parker might can address this later, I don't know if he's heard about this or not, but they're going to, a lot of the laws that govern misdemeanors are going to be defund, decriminalized. So some of these guys that's been going to prison for certain misdemeanor cases will not be going now. So Wayne County Jail will be filled up again, maybe. But just for information purposes. We just established a Wayne County Detention Advisory Board, and we met, as Mr. Mayo said, last week, the 10th of September. Very good meeting. There's one individual that we're at the meeting, Mr. Scott Peel, is not a member of that committee, but we want to recommend, Mr. Chairman, that he be appointed to that committee today, so everybody on the board will be appointed as of today. And I want to put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bale. Motion's on the floor by Mr. Bale to appoint Mr. Scott Peel to the board, to the Detention Center Board. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, that is unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. Further information about the Detention Center, as you know, Wayne Community, Wayne Correctional Center, so they say Wayne Community College is going to be closed, that's not true. Wayne Correctional Center is going to be closed. I think the last inmates are going to be leaving on the 26th of October. And what we have done, we've made contact with all of our local legislators, also Mr. David Geis, Mr. Solomon in Raleigh, trying to get permission to go out and visit that center along with the Sheriff Department. And the legislators made a recommendation to me that we submit a resolution ASAP. And Mr. Parker have written a resolution requesting that we take over that center as soon as it's vacated by the prison department. And we also want to ask Mr. Smith and staff if they would do RFQ qualification for assessment of the Wayne Correctional Facilities. And once that's done, we asked them to bring it back, prepare it, after you prepare a formal recommendation to be brought back to the county commission for recommendation, consideration. And the resolution, we will read at a later, soon as we get down to that point. But we hope that we can get this center from the Department of Prison, Division of Prison. At one time, we were talking about building what, Mr. Price, Mr. Smith, a $65 to $70 million jail. And I'm pretty sure we can remodel this jail for a lot less, many, many million dollars less. So that's going to be saving the county quite a bit of money if we can get it. And it's going to save us from having to transport inmates out of county. This jail will hold about 400 people at least, that many, and take that with the 200 that we already have, that's about 600 people that we can house. So we're going to be asking the commissioners to take this under consideration, and hopefully that we can get this done in short order. Thank you, Mr.. Do we need to put this in the form of a motion by the RFQ?
Mr. Bale, you certainly are welcome to do that at this time if you'd like.
Okay, well, that's, I'm going to put that in the form of a motion.
Motion's on the floor then by Mr. Bale to have the county manager to draw up an RFQ. Can you have a date on that since time is of the essence? Would you like to give us a date?
We have a draft pretty much prepared, so we can have it October 1st meeting. We'll have a committee meeting before, and then have the committee actually do a formal recommendation on October 1st.
Good, okay. RFQ, then motion on the floor, Mr. Bale, have an RFQ brought about by the county manager and be presented back to the board October 1st, in discussion. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bale.
Okay, thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bale. Real quickly, just want to thank each commissioner for all the work that you're doing. And you certainly are working commissioners. All of you have taken your responsibilities seriously on your committees and making time of your busy schedules and away from your work and your family to be able to... your work and your family, to be able to go to these meetings and be there at your, doing your job. And I just really appreciate it as your Chair. Something that, all of you said something to bring to the attention of myself, of wanting to comment on them, but I will not do that. But certainly, all of you have spared some interest here. But one in particular is a trip that Commissioner Mayo and his wife made to Langley this week. And Mr. Bell and I have been meeting with some of the Military Affairs Committee members to, in fact, will be meeting this week, to have, or secure, the strategy is to secure a strong armed lobbyist in Washington if BRAC becomes law, which it has not, but if it does, then certainly, people, I was writing down some of the names, I was very involved in this back in the early and mid 80s, where I went on several trips and was very much part of the MAC with people like Mr. Troy Pate, Mr. Hal Tanner Jr., Freddie Farrell, Darby Woods, Mayor Hal Plunk, Dr. Alan Harvin, these people back in the mid 80s and all of, just about all the 90s paved the way for where we are today. And I know there's a lot more, but I just, those names brought off the bat. But today, that tradition goes on with the people like Mr. Ben Seagars and Mr. Jimmy Edmondson, Mr. Henry Smith, and Mayor Hal King, and just to name a few. And for our Vice Chair, Mr. Mayo, to go and be a part of that. But those times are, they're not over, but they aren't as, they are not as effective as they used to be. They still are effective. And the principles that we show up and shake hands and tell how much we love them and how much they mean to us here in Wayne County, that still has to be expressed in a very, in a very polite and welcoming way. But it's gotten to the point now where it's funding, we saw that in sequestration, he saw that, Mayor, Mayor, Mr. Mayo saw that when he went up to there with the sequestration, the things that they had been doing in the past that weren't allowed to do this time. But we have, are seriously concerned about the Goldsboro in Wayne County, the $560 million a year that's turned over, Commerce says it's turned over about 4.2 times before it leaves the county. That's about a $2 billion cash flow, that if Seymour Johnson would leave, this is what we would have to be up against. That would affect our quality of life, it would affect our educational system, the sales tax receipts, the businesses, it would affect everything. So we are doing our best, and of course, our local legislatures and our national, federal Congressmen and House Members are certainly aware. But when we do get together, we do get together in a way to show our appreciation in this way. And I just want to thank you and the others as we move forward with the Military Affairs Committee. That's all my sort of reports. There's unfinished business now that we have, our Board voted about six, seven weeks ago, don't know the exact date, but we asked that the payroll issue be brought through Mr. Smith's staff, and that he take his staff, along with, there was a couple of, three Commissioners that joined his staff at different times, and they've been studying this. So I turn it over to Mr. Smith, he's been tasked to put this together, and for unfinished business today, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The Board had advised and asked myself, along with some of the staff, take a look at the issues of payroll over the last year. And today, what we are doing is I've adopted really a different process in that I think in order to make sure we have full disclosure to the Board, to the general public about what occurred, I think it's important that every individual that was impacted by any change in payroll over the last year, that it has to be an exact process, has to be a fine science. And I'm using basically methodology by the Department of Labor as discussions with them and how to do that. So I've personally taken this project. The auditors did a good job, and I have expressed to the Board that in no way am I criticizing the auditors, the auditors did the job they were asked to do in general. However, the Department of Labor and my talking with them, a timesheet is a timesheet, an hour worked is an hour worked. And so I'm actually going through person by person and having discussions with supervisors. And what we're wanting to do is bring back that assessment, so we know exactly what the issues are, but also coming back with, I think, what is more important, our process changes and procedural changes, to make sure that we are doing what's good for the public, for taxpayers, for the Board, that we follow your direction, and having good procedures on payment on a monthly basis. That even though I think we do have some good processes, you can always be better. And that was expressed, and I think that's what's growing out of this more than anything else, that it can be better. So over the next few weeks, I'll be doing that and working with all the staff and supervisors. I've already had some meetings with individuals and taking a look at some of the issues, and that has what's brought about today, to say, I do not want to bring to the Board any exact information today because I feel like, at this point, I owe it to not only the Board and the citizens, but to the employees to make sure this is exact, because it has to be. And so unless there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer any, we'll be bringing that back. We have a commit, not a committee, but a staff group that's been meeting, and I'll take that information back to them for assessment, before I bring it back to the Board with recommendations in October. But I mean, I feel good about the process that we have some directions. Anyway, I'm taking it personally on to make sure we do what we're supposed to do.
Are you saying in October, would you like to do that on the 1st of October, or the 17th of October?
It's probably going to be the 17th. We've got some things we've got to accomplish between now and the 1st, but I would say probably that second meeting, yeah. And that would give me time to bring it back to the staff to let them review.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Comments from the Board? October 15th, okay?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayo.
Did we not agree on the first meeting in October?
Well, we were, I'm trying to, well, it just depends on, that's why I've said after we have talked earlier, just depends on how much I can get accomplished, because I'm going to try and pull some staff in, because obviously I have 680 individuals to go through, so I expect that's going to take some, quite a few hours, because I'm telling you, I'm going to handle them personally.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayo.
The 17th, the 17th will be fine, but I'd like to
15th.
15th, rather. I'd like to, for you to make an extra effort to try, try to get it to us
Okay.
as soon as possible. This has been lagging so long, that the longer it goes, the more, the more of an issue it's beginning to come. And if you could make a concerted effort
I promise to do the best we can.
to try to get it to us the first meeting in October.
We'll try.
Okay.
All right, any other comments? Thank you. Unfinished business, Mr. Smith, is there any other items?
No, sir.
Okay, new business. We have Gateway presentation this morning, number one, on new business. Mr. Smith, we have some special guests that's going to make that.
We do, we have, she's already been at one time today, Executive Director of Gateway, Ms. Lynn Lambeth, and I asked her to come forward now and present, she's been going through a lot of changes and iterations of changes within Gateway, so we're glad to have her on board.
Good morning, Jan.
Good morning.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you about Gateway. I'd like to give you a brief overview of my initial analysis of the business, steps that have already been taken in order to change the direction of the system, and future plans for improving transportation service to the residents of Wayne County. Just to give you a little personal background, I ran the transportation system in Johnston County for eight years, and am very proud of what we accomplished. During that time, JCATS became a professional, well-respected, profitable, and integral part of the community. My educational background is in business, and I have a bachelor's degree from Cornell University and an MBA from St. John Fisher College. I'd like to bring that same focus to Wayne County. I've been in this position for a little over three months. This has been very challenging, but at the same time, it has been very rewarding, as I have started to see progress in changing the direction of the organization. I'd like to thank my Board of Directors and County Manager, Mr. Smith, for their amazing support during this time. Gateway's mission statement has been my focus and has driven the business decisions that have been made. Our mission statement is, "Goldsboro Wayne Transportation Authority strives to be the premier provider of transportation services for the residents of Wayne County." I have identified three major goals that are aligned with this mission statement. Efficiently and effectively manage Gateway, resulting in a positive NOI, and ultimately resulting in building at least three months of operating reserves. Number two, provide outstanding customer service internally and externally. Number three, recognize that Gateway's employees are our strongest asset and the key to our success. To achieve these goals, immediate change was necessary, and I am currently in the process of redeveloping the entire operation. I'd like to share with you three major projects that have been undertaken in the last three months that are critical in moving us towards achieving these goals. First, major organizational restructure. I've redefined staff roles and responsibilities and conducted major reorganization in order to ensure that the correct skill levels are strong and present for each position. I've also instituted strong focus on accountability and teamwork. Second, I've implemented new scheduling software effective August 1st. This will inherently improve efficiencies through scheduling. We will also obtain strong data to conduct route and rate analysis. Third, I've applied for competitive NCOD grant totaling $360,000 over two years. The key to this is that it is effective this fiscal year. The focus is on public transportation. The local match for this was provided through our Rural Operating Assistance Grant that I just presented earlier. So what are some of our next steps? There will be a strong focus on financial performance. We will also focus on the full utilization of our scheduling software, which will improve operational efficiencies and decrease expenses. In addition, we will have necessary data that will allow us to perform route and rate analysis, which should increase revenue. There will be a continued focus on staff development, cross-training, and workflow analysis. We will develop a marketing plan focused on reimaging the system through areas such as fleet redesign and website development. We will also focus on community outreach and education. I'm very excited to let you know that the Transfer Center project is moving forward. The city has received approval for Tiger Grant, for the Tiger Grant, in the amount of $10 million. The breakout of these funds is not clear at this time, but it is understood that the portion of the grant that will be used for the, there will be a portion of the grant that will be used for completing the construction of the Transfer Center by the end of 2014. We expect to hear from the Tiger Project Manager by the end of September. These are just a few highlighted areas that I will be focusing on in the next several months. In conclusion, I feel strongly that Gateway will be successful if there is a business focus, accountability is in place, and there is support and commitment from staff and the community. I know we have challenges ahead of us, but I am committed to working towards achieving identified goals that are aligned with our mission statement and core values. I will be glad to report back at a future date, once I have measurable data, which would clearly show our progress. Ultimately, I'd like to assure you that this operation cannot only be sustained, but it will be positioned for growth. I don't know if anyone is familiar with the TV show The Profit, but Marcus Limonis, who runs a multi-billion dollar company, Camping World, consults with struggling businesses. One of my favorite sayings of his is, "When you realize change is necessary for growth, you can't be stopped." Thank you, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Pate?
I just want to applaud you for your efforts to examine the efficiency and financial performance and get this thing back on track where it needs to be.
Yes, sir.
Too many times I've seen the buses go by with, the larger buses, maybe one person on it, so that's all credit you're putting to work.
Yes.
I look forward to you, you know, you moving forward in this.
And I also have strong
...
Yes, sir. And I have strong support in the industry, and we'll be working with the Institute for Transportation Research and Education, and they'll be coming and helping us do some route analysis, once we have that data.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Mayo?
Ms. Lambeth, did I understand you correctly in your opening statements, that over in Johnston County, that you actually had that into a profit situation?
Yes, sir.
And that's what you, that's one of your goals here?
Yes, it is. We are strongly, it's strongly recommended by NCDOT that we maintain at least a three months operating reserves. And that is just a standard in the industry. And I, the struggle with that is, with the grants and the timing for release and when you can draw down the funds, it can become a cash flow issue. So we need to be able to sustain ourself and our customer service and our passengers' trips during the time that it might be delayed in being able to pull that grant funding down. For example, our current year CTP grant that we're working under right now, we have not had an executed contract yet, so we are not able to pull down expenses that we've already incurred for July and August. So we need to be prepared for those types of situations. In addition, I think it's important to build the reserves in order to provide the local match through the system itself, in order to obtain advanced technology, additional vehicles, or whatever we might need. I'm anticipating that the demand will continue to grow. That's been my experience in public transportation, that that service is truly needed in this community. And I need to position the operation to be ready for that growth.
Well, as a Commissioner and a businessperson, I applaud you. I like your attitude, and I applaud you for stepping out and doing a great job.
Thank you. I'm going to work very hard, I'm sure that I'm going to make some mistakes along the way, but, and it'll take some time to turn things around, but I've seen some progress already, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Daughtry.
I don't know how we were able to capture you from Johnston County, but I applaud your efforts, and I applaud the County Manager for bringing you here. I think it's remarkable that you've taken on a task that really needed to be taken on. So any way I can help, let me know. I appreciate it.
I sure will, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kumari.
I would just be curious, the progress that was made in Johnston County, did it have more to do with increasing ridership, or did you have to increase the fee schedule?
It was a combination of things. It actually had to do a lot with being able to implement some advanced technology, mobile data units that we were able to put on the vehicles. And we were able to purchase that through the system, based on, you know, how we had been able to save up in our reserves. That provided some efficiencies. We also were very focused on the expenses and controlling those. But it was also a combination of the rate structures. As with any business, it's important to build in a certain amount of margin in order to make sure you're covering your expenses.
And the reason I say that, congratulations on the work you've done, but I would not want the citizens of Wayne County to not be able to use the service because we made it profitable on their backs where the fee schedule is concerned.
Absolutely.
And sometimes, on our Board, it tends to get to where, to move forward, there has to be some sort of a discussion about how somebody might pay more to get the service, or some method like that, and I see you dealing with elderly and disabled. So I want that to be in consideration, and things brought back to us. I would, I would like to see increased ridership over maybe the less tasteful way of having to increase the route, the fee schedule on folk who at least likely to be able to afford it. Thank you.
Yes.
The others?
Just a real quick comment. In 2003, our tax rate was 66 cents per 100. It has made it all the way up to 76.40 two years ago. After the revow, it came down to 70. This past year, the Commissioners have voted to bring it back down to 66 cents per 100, as it was back in '03. Unless you want to increase those taxes to pay for the programs, certainly is up to this Board to do so, Mr. Kumari. The fee schedules are structured to offset, hopefully, those tax rate increases. And when you have to sustain any program, you have to look at all avenues, and I commend Ms. Lambeth for looking and being so up to date on DOT and what their recommendations are for grant applications, because DOT does look at this as a form of transportation, moving people. moving people, that's their business. And I am really happy that, uh, as, as a commissioner, after fighting for four years publicly and going on record that this program needs to be amputated, not just a Band-Aid or a tourniquet, I asked that it be amputated two years ago. Do I feel that way today? Absolutely not. And it's because we've got a good leader. Um, I think we have a good leadership team in the commission. Uh, I think that the way that, uh, you have, uh, come aboard and taught profitable, taught controlling expenses, um, taught about, uh, customer, uh, safety and customer service with the right employee that, that are driving these, these vehicles, that are welcoming these people aboard, that are helping these people get aboard, who are going, uh, the extra mile to make sure that they are driving a safe bus or a safe vehicle, and, and doing a, a better job than they've ever done. I commend you for that. But your focus is to sustain a program that is expensive, and to hear you say that, uh, you're looking into sustainability and profitability from something that has a history of bleeding to death, uh, absolutely. And you've been on board now three, three months, ready to, to go at it, um, stand in the gap wherever it's needed, and, and do the job for, for, uh, for this transportation system called Gateway. That's just my comments.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kamari.
It was not my intent to draw in negative light upon the fact that we're trying to keep the budget in line, and I can applaud the, uh, board for reducing the, uh, percent of, uh, the tax rate. I stand on my statement though, ma'am. I wouldn't use the word, "The system was bleeding." I've read the newspaper about how the Gateway system was probably in the red and maybe not run at the maximum level, but I stand on the statement that, uh, uh, I don't want the bleeding to be stopped on the back of the least able. And, uh, and in terms of the reduction in the tax rate, the citizens also saw a revaluation of the property, which went up also. So let's not lose sight of the fact that we may have reduced a few cents, but more money has come into the coffers because the property in Wayne County was reevaluated and therefore increased, and that was increased on the back of citizens. So let's, I just wanna make it in a perspective of which I intended it to be, not to, uh, not to bring any light upon any way that you would have to do it. I just would want you to do it without there being any, uh, the first brush, I would not want it to be on the back of citizens with a rate increase. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Kamari. The figures that I was quoting as far as a, a system, uh, needing to be amputated was taken from the last, uh, not this past year, but for the three, uh, four, four previous years from the profit law statements from Gateway, not from the newspaper. And the average rate, uh, or average revow for the whole county was 17%, which of course, this commissioner felt like it wasn't appropriate to be at 70.25, it needed to be lower, and that's, that's where it is today at 66, according to what the, the board has put, has voted off for the budget. But moving forward, I, I would like to ask that you keep us very much abreast, um, about your finances, that each quarter, we would certainly like to see, and as soon as, I believe, Nunambe Shire continues to be your accountant, or does your profit law statements.
I believe so, yeah.
And we would certainly like to, to get those financials, uh, as we move forward, to show us, um, um, the accountability that we have as a board, like, would, would like to see those figures, and not specifically read about anything in the paper, but we would like to see your reports.
Absolutely.
To know that what we're seeing is that's exactly what, what you're spending and what you're saving. I, I think that the comment you made, uh, that you're gonna put together a, a three-month, reserve, I think that's superb. What is your reserve now? Do, do you have a fund balance or a reserve?
I believe it's around $120,000, and, and I'm struggling with that because of, of what I discussed with the grant, um, and being able to pull those funds down. One thing that'll happen, will, will help us as well is the, the Rope Grant will have the 100% of those funds available October 31st, so that will help as well.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Thank you. Mr. Smith, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Uh, just glad to have her on board, and sorry, Johnston County, we do what we have to do. I've gotten a couple of calls.
I've had a few drivers stopping in to see me wanting to know when I'm gonna come back.
That's not happening.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's 10 o'clock. Before we get into budget amendments, we have public hearings at 10. There are some here that wish to speak. At this time, uh, we will open it up for our public, public comments. Anyone here wish to speak? If so, uh, please come to the podium, state your name and your address, and give us your phone number. Thank you.
I'm Glenn Phillips. My address is 513 Plantation Road, Goldsboro, North Carolina, 919-580-9809. Thank you for four minutes. I'm a minister, so somebody may have to call time on me. Ray Mayo, my good church member, knows how to do that. He's done that occasionally. I'm back today to say just a word about literacy connections, and then another word, and, um, I thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Uh, two weeks ago, I, I spoke to you, and I appreciate you hearing me, but I was not really, um, a part of that program. Ms. Yates was the one bringing that, and, and she granted me a couple of moments, Windsor Ingram and I, to share our story, and I hope I did that well, to say a little bit about what that program means. And I want to take another moment today to challenge you all to really consider the actions that you're taking. I know we have a 30-day window here that you have given us, and I've, I've listened, and I know, I know you all have a difficult job, trust me. I, I didn't run for county commissioner, and I will not be running for county commissioner, so I honor the job that you're doing. But unfortunately for you, I'm preaching from Luke 12 this week. The last of that scripture from the lectionary says, "To whom much is given, much is required." So I'm looking you in your eyes today to tell you that much is required of you. And I know some of you think you've done that job by cutting our tax rate back to 66 cents, but I'd say it's more than that. There are persons in our community who I felt were spoken poorly of at our last gathering by persons on this board, who deserve some things that we can give them that they cannot give themselves. You can look at me and tell that I'm an upper-middle-class person, but I do believe that I'm supposed to be my brother's keeper. And as a commissioner, I believe that you are public servants, and that the literacy connections is an opportunity for a small amount of money in your total budget, to make a difference in our community for good, and not just for those individuals, but for our community, so that people can have jobs, pay taxes, buy goods, be contributing citizens. And I wanna believe that's what you all want, and know we need in this community. So we're, we're two weeks into the deadline now, I guess, 30 days, $2,000, and I would hope that there's been work done, and I know that, uh, Pat's meeting with the city manager this week, but we're talking about now. We're talking about what we can do this year, and I pray and hope that you will do your job. Now, in my last minute, I wanna say something else. I appreciate the hard work you do. I don't know all that you have to do. I know that Ray is a church member and gives a lot of time and effort and serious thought to this, but I'd like to say one other thing. We elected you, every single person, and no one of us, even an employee of the county, needs to feel demeaned in your presence, or as if they were spoken down to, or lack the abilities to do their jobs and to live as citizens in this community. I can live with your decisions. Should you decide not to give the $30,000 at all, not one penny, I'll live with that. I'll get busy and work, not to charge the people in that program, but to see if we can raise some money to make that program go. I cannot live with tones and demeanors towards our people that our elected officials should not have. I'm not concerned that I'm the pastor of the First Baptist Church. I don't want anybody to look at me to feel that I'm better than any of them. I am their servant. None of us are impressed with any accolades, honors, businesses, responsibilities in the state. We just want you to serve us.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
And that's what we're asking.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you.
Hoping to bring that up there for show and tell, but I'll tell you what, I don't even know what's in it, I just come from the post office. I trust that what's in it's in it.
Well, thank you for leaving it back down.
Something that shipped all the way from Charleston up to Connecticut and back here again. In response, in response to the speaker before me, as a producer of products that produce peace, education is my number-one product, and it's got Simon's Twin Music, and the educator is the healer and liberator. Tom Drew, P.O., Box 587, Goldsboro, 27533. And the educator is the healer and liberator. And when democracy is right and tight, you do not have to be president or commissioner to preside. Commissioner Daughtry, it's understood in this town that there's no love lost between some leadership at News August and some elected officials, though in communications, human relations, they say there's a greater compliment than to be loved. Do you know what that is? To be trusted. Recent, uh, public comment, I did address, uh, appeal to Reverend Barber. I did send him an email, open letter, seeking opportunity at time, place mutual convenience, healthy, open discussion of the state of education, democracy. I just called before I come here. I'll send it by the NAACP's Durham Office info email. Did confirmation just a few minutes ago that it was received and was forwarded to him. Library computers were down this morning, so I don't know, there might be a response. Last, Mr. Bell, since you're the one with seniority on this board, for show and tell, I got some box over there, uh, for show and tell. One time before, I brought a piece of firewood, do you recall that? I bet y'all missed it, Commissioner Flowers, and did, because it was a top-notch piece of firewood. I addressed that later. Hope you remember the message went with it, but, uh, last Board of Education meeting, I addressed, uh, would not trade democracy for all the tea in India and China. They would trade the base commander five pounds of American tea if she could get the publishers of the News August answers to two questions about democracy. And I did get that in writing and emailed by the next day, and, uh, I was hoping to call there too before I come in, because as of last night, there was no, yesterday, no emailed response on that. I did secure sending it again to care of her secretary, and she did confirm that she had it, and I was gonna call her and make sure the status is forwarding to the base commander. Commissioner Pate. Commissioner Pate. I still seek, uh, Vic Miller's email address, or one that's viable, in, in his capacity as the chairman of the Veterans Advisory Council. Would you have that today?
I don't have that personally.
Well, in his capacity as, he gave me one, I'm getting delivery failure notifications, and not getting no response from his Texas phone number. Not, my understanding, he's in Goldsboro, and I'll check with the veterans, uh, thing. And there's an evolution of love called love. Between love and love is different between being the onest of friends and the best of friends, and the wars of the world have little due, mental rights, and broken trees, and popularized those ability to love and be loved, or better yet, worked.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Bye-bye.
Anyone else?